Yeah. So Kate's gonna create the minutes uh off the live feed.
Okay.
Yeah, she's on the case right now. I saw John out. He'll be here.
Tyler, how you doing?
In a beautiful bay right side of the dirt. Do you want my mom and dad's out frying on your way up?
Yes. What are they doing by there putting a new patio in?
New patio is going in. So that's been, yesterday we got underneath concrete and discovered that they had poured concrete over just herringbone brick from the house to the grass. So just hold on brick and slowly but surely a new patio will be put in. That's what's happening.
I heard a lot of digging back there, a lot of concrete being smashed.
Since I don't know Kate's gonna be here tonight, I'm gonna deliver this to your
Okay, I've got something for you.
Hi.
Oh yeah.
Good. Tired.
You requested these?
Twenty mile bike.
Oh.
Good. Oh, yes. Outstanding. Thank you, sir.
Alright. Looks like we got somebody. I haven't, I haven't actually looked at it yet.
At least that's what's required.
Gentlemen?
Who else? You talking about?
How you doing, Paul?
Well, we
Okay.
Dave.
Yeah.
Kate's not gonna be here. Here's the deposit for the trail project.
Okay. Alright, thank you, thank you. Take care of us. Yeah, see that.
I was needed. Just gonna get a case of beer and wait for the next test.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, John.
Oh, hello.
Hello. Really.
Hello.
Hello. Why is one of our calendar so undry?
I moved this one to September today. I didn't even see that one over there. You gonna miss Marita next week?
I will. We've been partners.
She's ready for vacation. Been busy. She likes to be with you. Alright, it's seven o'clock. Let's uh do the pledge of allegiance. Yes, to the United States of America. Alright, um we have a quorum. So we are able to conduct business and did everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Yes.
From last month.
I'm making motions to accept those, I've written.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Sorry. Alright. Alright, the first thing I wanted to talk about is um uh the last meeting, we had some complaints about our live feed. And the complaints were that they, they could hear us, fine. But they couldn't hear the people in the back. Because they were sitting behind people and the microphone wasn't really picking them up. So if you wanna make some comments tonight, uh please stand up and state your name because Kate uh is going to be um transcribing the minutes off of the live feed this time because she's out of town. So if you could please stand up and state your name so she knows who made the comments. But, and, and speak loudly, as loud as you can, so that we can get it.
We'll come up to the front row.
Yes, if you're in the back, you might wanna come forward. Okay, um. Next thing on the agenda is the uh the announcement about the budget readings. Budget readings are gonna be on September fifteenth at five o'clock. That'll be here. That'll be the first reading. And then the second reading of the budget will be September thirtieth at five o'clock. That will also be here. Alright, um. As everybody knows, we have been uh taking we took um applications for new council member because Denny is um going to resign on October first. And we had two very good candidates um interview for the, the position. And it was a really hard decision because both of them were very um capable and so it was a very hard decision for me anyway. But um what I would like to do is uh make a motion that we, uh the council selects uh Tyler Kirker for the next um council position.
I'll second that motion. And I'll also make a motion that he be vice president.
I'll second that motion. But thank you very much. Um we appreciate you, your interest in the town and we look forward to working.
I see.
Thank you.
Well, he, he's uh gonna be installed in October. Yeah, so. Right, in October we'll get you set up. Alright, um. So um Justin Flatterman has a building permit.
Yes, uh I'd like to do an addition to my house on Washington Street. Um I have a picture here and where the utilities and such are. Would you love to see that?
Sure.
The uh color code's right there.
So what are you actually adding, Justin?
Uh it's two bedrooms and a bathroom and then it'd be a basement as well, but it's just open.
So this is the condition. So it really doesn't extend a whole lot beyond your existing house?
Uh it's basically go where my current deck is.
Okay.
Okay, do you have overall dimensions on what, what the new structure's gonna be size wise?
Twenty-six feet by eighteen feet.
Okay, we know that. And there's not over any utilities?
Only the sewer exiting, which goes out.
Okay, so the lateral belongs to the homeowner anyway, correct? So if there were ever problem with where you're adding that, you would end up having to tear something up to get to it.
Right.
If you're gonna build over top of it. Okay. No other utilities?
They're all over here.
Okay, gotcha. And the other detail we typically get is um what kind of siding, what kind of roofing?
Uh vinyl siding and a shingle roof.
Shingle roofing, okay.
Okay. So it'll be on the slab or crawl space?
Slab.
I'll make a motion to uh allow a permit.
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, so.
Alright, you owe us two bucks.
Two bucks.
Two bucks.
You're official.
You, you can wait probably till Kate, Kate'll have to get you the bill.
She asked me to uh
Oh, it's alright, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you also do have to go to Brookville.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Then Kate gives this information?
Yep.
Alright, um the next thing on the agenda is uh the internet service uh here at the fire station has been upgraded. We've asked them to upgrade it temporarily while we try it out and because our live feed did not work after they, after they changed the phone service, the internet service dropped to uh fifty-fifty megabytes per second upload and download. And that just wasn't enough to support the live feed. So uh we, we had them uh increase it to one hundred, one hundred and it's been working fine since we did that. Um so they've given us the price, the additional cost of that. Right now, the fifty by fifty is um fifty-eight dollars a month. And this new one hundred by one hundred is a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a month. So that seventy-one dollar increase per month, but it, it is really something we need. So um unfortunately, it's seventy-one dollars. So I need a motion to accept um oh and then, and then we can renegotiate that after the, the term.
How long's the term?
I'll make a motion to do it.
I think it's seven months.
Okay. I'll second.
Alright, all in favor? Okay. Alright, the um Jeff and Gary, do you wanna make a, uh give us a update on the walking trail?
So we'll do, we'll do a two-part. Uh Gary's gonna uh have a uh, we, we need to come up with a trails rules sign. That'd be part of the, the trail. We looked at other trails. Uh and we searched the internet. What do, what do people say? You know, what, what's on there? And a lot of this, don't do this, don't do this, you cannot do this. So we, but instead having so much negative, we try to keep it as positive as we can. So um we got a sample. I wanted to run by you guys, see what your thoughts are. If there's anything we're not seeing, if we wanna add anything, track anything. Be stricter.
Gary Munchel. Um so as Jeff was saying, that we tried to keep it simple but comprehensive. So there's six guidelines here. And hopefully they're just good common sense rules. And so uh Chris Munchel's coming up with a graphic for the signs. So don't pay attention to anything look and feel wise. But we just wanted your thoughts on if we're heading in the right direction or any other suggestions to consider around the guidelines themselves that, that we're proposing.
How off, how uh close or this, how many signs are there gonna be?
The trails rules sign will be one. It's like, I believe a three and a half foot by six foot tall.
And that'll be close to the maple?
Yeah, close to maple. Uh the, the bollards that we're designing, uh Matt Staley, we're working with him on those. Uh but look at the very top there of the black though. The little graphics.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at something like that for the top of the bollard. So Matt is in the process of designing that for us. And originally the plan's called for uh four foot bollard in, in the ground. And then a four and a, four and a half inch, now a five inch pipe over top of it. But to move that once, that Freud best time or whenever you need to do maintenance, we're gonna have to lift that bollard, the outside bollard, four foot high in the air to get it off the the bollard to begin with. So Matt came up with the idea of just mounting it to the, uh put a, a mounting bracket. But also put two of them in, one where it's normally gonna be, one off the sides. So that when we do go to move it, rather than throwing it on the back of a truck, getting it scratched up, damaged or whatever. Uh we'll just set it off the side, fold it down, and when Freud best is over or an event is over, we'll fold it right back to where it was.
Okay.
And meantime, it's flush with the ground.
So, welcome to Maple Heritage Park Trail. To ensure the enjoyment of all users, please follow these simple rules. No motorized vehicles, keep to the right, pass to the left. Announce your presence when passing. Pedestrians have the right of way. Leash and clean up after your pets. Be courteous and have fun. This trail was made possible through an Indiana Next Level Grant and the Oldenburg Freudenfest.
What's pedestrians have the right of way mean?
Um it's somebody's there with a, on a bicycle.
Okay, so bicycles, bicycles, skateboards allowed. Okay.
Gotcha.
Unless they got a motor.
Right.
Now, um how about electric bicycles? Is that considered a motorized? I know on the Monon Trail in Indianapolis, they allow them. Even though the motorized, that says no motorized vehicles.
I think the location where it's at, it's flat. I think people are gonna be, if they're there, they're gonna be paddling.
Okay.
I don't, for as few of them as there are, I don't think will be an issue.
The only thing that I was raised a question on is this is following the agro-truerism because there is a sign to if you're using it, then that individual takes on all responsibilities that they trip, fall, get hurt.
You don't want to put that on there.
What you have as far as that. I have, I can give you a picture of the sign. The DNR used to provide them, where if you put it at like, you own a hundred acres, you put it at any access point, if somebody trespasses on your property, it absolves you from that liability prior to the purple paint rule. Because at your one or two entrances, if they come across, it, it alleviated that. That would be the only question I got as far as you know, somebody trip, fall, get hurt and now bound liable or they're accepting it because they're utilizing this agro-truerism.
Putting the, putting the notice up won't alter that. Okay, and then um by, by anybody using any of the town facilities, they're already always what's called assuming the risk involved with the use of the facility. Secondly, if somebody's bound to determine to sue the town, they're gonna do it regardless of what's on the sign. But it's conceivable that putting that on, that putting that on a sign might deter somebody from uh actually filing suit or doing something uh stupid, start injure themselves.
So how would you work that, John? Claimed not responsible for accidents? Using your own risk?
I would say, you know, y- user assumes all risks of trail use. I, I mean, if you really want me to come up with an actual short brief, I can do that. What, what does the DNR thing say?
It, it goes through inheritance and then there's the, the laws for like, for the one that I push on property that I utilize for the people. It goes through um you know, like you're hiking, biking, all roads, hunting, fishing. It, it covers the white game and then the, the, the
Yeah.
It's under, um and they have to be eighteen by twenty-four to be a legal sign before that one, when this all pass. Um and it's a bright yellow sign. The box will be kind of a high door. I can go out and get a picture and send it to one of you guys at the RV. So you can see it. Uh but like I said, I only have one and there's something you got one for interact. Look at, see. If you're the idea out, it's on, it's on.
What's the difference uh between trail and somebody using our shelter?
Nothing.
And following and tripping and hurting themselves?
None.
So we're already
Or the park.
Yeah, the current park. Like you're walking down to the maple.
Right.
Okay.
That's why I say, I mean, you you don't actually have to post that notice. Um the bigger and more complicated it is and the brighter and louder it is, maybe defeating the purpose of what these guys were saying that they want this sign to be. If you think that's how the sign should be.
I would say anything
I would say go, go ahead and send them a picture of what you have. And then we can take a look at it. And see if, because it doesn't have to be there at the maple. But it could be somewhere else on the property.
Any access point to that. So crossing the bridge, you're right towards the crossbridge, up, up here on the other end. And that may, it may have been private land, I don't know.
It is.
Okay, um but without owning it, I don't know where that you know.
Okay. Yeah, send them the picture and then we'll take a look at it. Alright, anything else on the walking trail? The rip raft looks really nice.
Alright.
Did a really good job.
Well, thanks for uh coordinating that. I think I've ordered to be the uh email parent.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I've been here. Moved paving back one day, so right now we're looking at paving on uh Wednesday.
Okay.
The big changes on the way.
So after it gets paved, um then all that's left is grading.
And seating.
And seating.
Then on each of the uh entrances, like on each street entrance, that curb will be cut out and concrete redone there. Because they went to work their way out so the concrete trucks weren't driving over.
Okay. Alright, good.
And there's various concrete pads along the way, right?
Mm-hmm, for benches.
Is there three of those? One, one down there?
Three, four.
Four, okay.
So what, what, at what point will those be done then?
Those are already done.
Oh, those are done.
And the radius and the, the pads, uh for, for the uh recycle, that pulls down the girls softball field. That, that's already been done.
Okay.
Sounds like the next meeting ought to be on, on the pads?
Yeah. Can't livestream from there. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um Water Street update. We've got a situation with the Water Street update, uh with the Water Street project, um looks like we have a decision to make as far as um whether we wanna spend some funds. It, it's gonna be there's some risk to spending these funds because we're waiting for what they call CE approval, which is the environmental approval. Uh which is tied to the uh historical aspects of the project. Um primarily the culver. And that, that situation has delayed the project to the point where we, we couldn't start right away work without the, can't start right away work until we get the environmental approval. And the timing to get the right of way covered by the funds, uh the right of way work done, the appraisals um has passed. That, the, the funding has is no longer available for that, uh from the federal government for the first phase. Um we can wait and do it in the second phase, but then if we do it in the second phase, we're gonna stretch it out even more and we'll lose the um, the right of way acquisition funds had to be spent in fiscal year twenty-six. And so we can't delay getting the right of way appraisals done. They have to be done by April first in order for the timing and all the work um to get the acquisition of the right of way funds from the federal government in twenty-six. So what that is, is twenty-six thousand dollars is the price for the appraisals and some of the work that goes along with uh getting those appraisals. And we really can't afford to wait to get that covered by the federal government, by the grant. So we're gonna be on the hook for twenty-six thousand dollars. And then when the CE, the CE is gonna be approved by the state by April first. They, they've told us that and Don just told us that uh there's no reason why that won't be approved. Um and what they're using is, is net benefits provision. That's new. And they're gonna get the CE pushed through so that we can begin purchasing right away in twenty-six. So um, so we're gonna, we're gonna spend the twenty-six thousand with the chance that the CE doesn't get approved. Um and then then we're, we're, we're gonna have to pay for the right of way as well. The right of way acquisition. Uh but if we do it this way, we'll get the right of way acquisition taken care of by the federal grant. And um in the end, the town will spend fifty-seven thousand dollars out of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So I feel like it's worth the risk to, for the town at this point to spend the twenty-six thousand dollars for the, for the right of way um appraisals. Can I get a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion to.
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Okay, um and I'm not su- I'm not really clear when we're gonna get that bill um for twenty-six thousand, but it's coming. Because the report I got from HWC today states that um, that work has already started.
Oh, that's what they were, that's what they wanted.
Right. Yes, that's, yes. They use it. Okay, um next thing on the agenda, uh we had we have a problem with the roof on the shelter and the shed behind we have a problem with the roof on the shelter and the shed behind the fire station. And I went out and got three bids. Dave got the bid from Hornberger Roofing, who did the sewer plant previously.
Yes.
And then we went out to up top roofing, and we wanted a good apple roofing. We had two bids from each of them. One was for a metal roof. And one was for shingles, just traditional dimensional shingles. Hornberger came in for the metal with six inch, oh, and we're increasing the size of the gutters to six inches. Hornberger for the metal roof with six-inch gutters was ten thousand eight seventy. Up top roofing was nineteen to fifty, and good apple roofing was twenty-three thousand nine eighty. And for the shingles, Hornberger Roofing was, and this is shingles with six-inch gutters as well. And this this does include taking off the old shingles on both bids, disposing of all that, putting down synthetic membrane down. And for the shingles, it was ten thousand two seventy-five for Hornberger, which is very close to what the metal roof was gonna cost to them. Up top roofing was nine thousand one fifty, and good apple roofing was twenty-one seven sixty. So those are the quotes.
And the metal roofing would be be able to match the the colors?
The fire station. Yes.
Yeah, he recommended we do that, get it a bright red, selective, tell all bright red you can get.
Right. And it's twenty-nine gauge, and I do have the bids, if you want to look at them, the actual bids.
Is that a full barn type roof or standing single with on the firehouse?
It's gonna be like the one on the firehouse.
I'll make a motion to go with metal roofing with Hornberger Roofing at ten thousand eight seventy. I'll second that motion.
I think I think that's our best long-term solution.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
I will have new gutters, and it'd be the same color as the roofing.
Right.
Otherwise, we have to paint the gutters if we did.
All right, I'll let Hornberger know. Now, move to old business. First thing on old business is Matt Staley. I talked with talked with him yesterday, he is going to install the new emblems along the the railing out here on Monday. They're complete and they'll be installed on Monday. And next thing is this, there's signs there at what the intersection of Water Street and Pearl, the fire station signs and the stop sign and the pedexing sign. Those have been ordered, they did come in, so here in the next couple of weeks, I'll get those installed. You said something about maybe getting the heister down there and okay. All right, I'll I'll get in touch with you and we'll see what we can do. All right, and any update on the walking bridge?
Not at this point.
Still to wrap up.
Ask a lot of a lot of people that's been in that situation with restoring old bridges, even Tom Lysin, go to the bridge down there in girls softball field. Him being here working on this project, he looked at, so a lot of comments. Just gotta figure out which direction we want to go. Are we more concerned with safety or are we more concerned with keeping it historical as it is with less safety? And I guess in the end, how much we're willing to spend on it, so.
So when you say it that way, you're thinking the options are replace it completely or? Or?
Probably the two, the two best scenarios that so far that we've heard is to keep the bridge in place as is. Take the deck off of it. Straighten it, because both guys said that that this kind of work before, so they could could straighten that bridge, it's pretty wavy, if you want to do it. Straighten it and then weld uprights like every four inches so that someone can't fall through, and that gets you compliant with the safety regulations. And that wouldn't change the appearance a whole lot, and then paint it. The other, the other thing was to jack it up and put another I-beam or two underneath it as it is. Set it on the supports of this, but beef it up with two additional I-beams, and then they said you you won't have anything to worry about, but you know, structural support.
Okay, any idea, any cost, kick the round?
One guy threw out about a twenty thousand dollar figure. But that was, that's, you know, not for a quote, that was just a ballpark.
And that didn't have to have to be engineering involved as well, right?
He wanted, he wanted somebody to sign off that whatever he put down would would, he didn't want the liability. He said, I know how to do everything structurally, and I want somebody else to sign off on it, saying that, yes, it'll support this way.
Okay. All right, well, we'll wait until we hear more developments on that.
We'll keep checking.
Okay. Anybody else got any old business?
Just one thought on that walking bridge, and I maybe this is a silly idea, but I have no idea what a new bridge would cost to go across it. Leave it in place, put a new one beside it that's wheelchair compatible to allow even wheelchairs onto the onto the track. But I guess you can get to the track at either end, too, if you were in a wheelchair or something, but.
That was one of the comments with the guy from DNR, when we were first about possibly using some money if we had left over towards that fixing that bridge. They won't put any money into it because it wouldn't be ADA accessible, like the rest of the the trail is. However, they obviously can enter every street, will be handicapped accessible. So the trail, complete trail is handicapped accessible. But they did note that if they did anything to the bridge and get any kind of funding, they would want it to be ADA accessible, and then you'd have to widen it. So basically, you could do that to the bridge as it is.
Right.
You have to put a new bridge, like you said. The problem with doing it right at that point is you'd have to have a switchback. When you have four concrete, have a switchback to get your, because right now you got a pretty steep ramp coming off there.
That's true.
And they'll be complying, you have to do a switchback with concrete
Gotcha.
to get that ball, so.
Okay.
But all those options are, they're out there.
As far as safety, have you thought on into like a cable netting or put it under the existing bridge for if somebody were to fall through where because I know a traditional rope net is not going to endure the weather, but coated cable netting? The thought to look into, I don't know. Get it under there, so, well, yep, so well, but that's it.
Anything else on old business? All right, anybody have anything from the audience here? Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourned, thank you all for coming. It is. Not long it was.